Welcome to the Wednesday, July 17th edition of the Town Board Work Session. Welcome, everybody. I call this meeting to order. And the first agenda item, I believe, is approval of the minutes. Everybody get a chance?
Attendance?
Attendance, that'd be good, yeah. Why don't you read the roll call and see who's here?
Barry.
Here.
Leanouts.
I'm here.
Lee.
Here.
Ackenden.
Here.
Taglish.
Here.
All present.
Thanks, Sue. Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes? Everybody get a chance?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Barry.
Aye.
Leanouts.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ackenden.
Aye.
Taglish.
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, seeing no guests, we'll move right into the action items. First one is a revision of the E-Pod overlay district.
So, this was on the agenda. I just wanted to update because there was a little bit of a gap between when we talked about this last and the scheduled public hearing is going to be August 7th. Obviously, these are draft regulations for consideration. I will share that Linda had some questions or comments, and so those have been reviewed by E-ECC at their last meeting, and I expect that we'll have some additional feedback or comments based on that?
Were they able to review them?
I think they started to. I don't know if they finished them.
Okay, because I tried to watch the video.
I think they had a busy agenda, and Kevin can obviously speak.
Yeah, I think they're going to continue.
But I think they started through.
Basically, what they did was they talked about it, and then they're going to review it and come back.
Okay.
And obviously, after the public hearing, there'll be additional public comments, we're expecting, so they'll go through those as well as any other board member comments.
Right. So we figured that could be happening concurrently, and so the public hearing will happen on the 7th, and then Town Board and ECC will continue to sort of review and comments and can be addressed in, as we go through that local law process. So I just wanted to give that update. There's really no action item. The public hearing has already been set via the paper.
Okay, any discussion? No? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Carrie, which is?
So, the local law to amend Four Corners and a small piece in the historic preservation overlay district. We have been looking at some potential minor revisions, mostly to wordsmithing, to make sure things are clear. And so, there will be a revised version circulated. However, again, the changes are very minor in nature. And one other noted change is the regulations proposed for the Four Corners District included, sort of consolidating both design requirements and operational standards. And signage was included, embedded right into the code language. So, the local law would also strike a signage section that's currently in Article 10 that deals with four-corner signage, so there's not confusion or conflicting regulations. So that's one addition that was noted in the local law draft. What I'd like to do is, we have, those regulations were being reviewed additionally by staff as like one last time. They're under review by Peter. The plan would be to circulate the revised draft local law, and it would show the changes that have been sort of contemplated. Those will be circulated to all of you well, with plenty of time beyond the 10 days required. It would also be posted to the website, so that the public can see the most current version that's being contemplated by the Town Board. And so, the request for tonight would be, if you're comfortable with the changes, to prepare a resolution adopting the local law for the August 7th meeting.
Carrie, I just had one question.
Sure.
It was regarding the A-frame signs.
Yep.
I know we've dealt with this a little bit in the past, I think. So, where it speaks about, you know, obstruction to pedestrian access, is that just, like, is it going to be enforced or reviewed by, I don't know, code enforcement or?
I will share, and I apologize, the revised version, and I'll put it in the folder for all of you. We actually refer back to the sign requirements for, just the general sign requirements for A-frame signs, so that it shows it can't be in the right-of-way, so there's a little bit more clear direction. They're not supposed to be in the right-of-way, so we wanted to make sure that that's very clear. So that, we did make some minor changes to that language in the draft regulation. So you'll see that in the revised version.
Okay. I'm just trying to think of some of the space that's there, you know, depending on which corner you're at.
Right.
The right-of-way may be most of that sidewalk, right?
In some cases, they might be limited as to where it can go. I think the, always the concern for A-frame signs is making sure you're not limiting site distance as people are turning in and out of development. So, it can be a little tricky in the Four Corners as to sort of where you are.
Yeah.
And so, that's something, that's one of the things that we, a comment received when it was reviewed internally, so we wanted to make sure we're being sort of consistent with that requirement.
And regarding those sandwich boards, I didn't see it or missed it. Is there any time limit, or can they put that out there and leave it there 365 days?
The only time limit is they have to come in at, in the evening, like, there's not supposed to be out in the evening. They're supposed to be pulled in.
Otherwise, it can be there 365 days.
Correct. Say it again.
Out when they're open for business.
Yeah, and I think it's during business hours, and it specifies like from this time to this time, so it aligns with generally when businesses are open.
Okay.
Is it different from the other parts of town? Or?
So, in this particular case, we made the change so that would refer back to the temporary portable sign reference in the sign code. That's the only place that we refer back to, the sign code. So that it's consistent with other places in the town, so.
Because I thought I recalled that the other part of town that was temporary. But I have to look at that. I might be mistaken.
And we, yeah, we can certainly take a peek at that. I can actually pull up the, bear with, I'm going to pull up two things if you'll indulge Yeah, and unfortunately, we've got a couple of places in our sign code where it repeats the same language, but you'll see, we've got, and this is the general sign language, portable temporary signs, where they can and can't be located. And forgive me for a moment, I'm just going to pull up one other thing while we're looking And I'll just walk through it, and I do apologize for not having this up. So, in the signage regulations, you'll, and I have it in simple view, because seeing it in the chain, the track changes can be a little bit difficult to follow, but I'll just show you the all markup version, so you can see what used to be there, and now what's going to be there, so you'll see that, you can see the change. I'll go back to simple, so you can sort of see what it's going to read. Portable temporary signs are permitted and must conform with the requirements of 250-10.11. And that is, 10.11 up here is the...
You're going right way.
Am I going?
You're going. Keep going.
Okay, thank you.
Right there.
Yeah, so the general provisions, and then they have the M is where it talks about the signs, where they can be located, the hours that they can be, no, signs should only be displayed between these hours, where they're not allowed to be. And so, we refer back to this section for guidance on the parameters.
Okay, and no product or pricing information?
Correct.
Those are different than the special signage, banners, sale stuff, and those are...
That's got a time limit.
Those are temporary, and those have time limits on them.
So if they're going to do a banner of a grand opening, or a special sale, or something like that, that's a little bit of a different thing.
Flags and balloons and whatever else, then there's, I think, four...
It's max a four weeks.
Yes.
Four-week permit for that.
Right. And they're coming in for a permit for each one week?
Every week.
Yeah. And just that's something to be responsive to businesses. They want to be able to sort of celebrate and advertise various things, and so, trying to meet somewhere in the middle, but not maybe have them all up all year round. Hopefully, that clarifies things. In keeping with the requirements for adopting a local law, we are going to very clearly show the changes that have been made since the first draft was issued out publicly, and then you'll all see that as well. And then, the one last place would be the strike-through, and additional section was added here that removes Section 250-10.26, because that's specifically related to four-cornered signage, and we don't want to have it conflicting.
Pete, a lot of the review, if there's an issue, bubbles up to the Town Attorney before it gets to the Board. I mean, the changes seemed pretty minimal, and I think, like Carrie said, to clarify, was there anything that you think the Board should know or be aware of before we move to resolution?
No, I am going to do another review of both the E-Pod and the Four Corners, so before the, before the final verdict is prepared, but...
Any other concerns, then, by the Board? Okay. Then, in that case, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution to be prepared for local law to amend the Four Corners District and Historic Preservation Overlay in the sites that are mentioned in the draft reviewed, subject to final review and approval by the Town Attorney, please.
I'll second. I'll second that.
Okay, Sue?
Barry.
Aye.
Leanouts.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ackenden.
Aye.
Taglish.
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, great.
Chief of Siders.
Thank you.
Move on to sidewalks. Mark?
So, happy to share and sent off the letter from the county today. So, major effort, the county is looking to grant a 50% matching grant for sidewalks. So they sent the letter back, and that's in the drop materials as well, so they're matching close to $700,000. So this is for the Jackson Road, kind of north of Penfield Center, up to Plank, Plank West, over to 250, or excuse me, West to Five Mile, excuse me, and then Five Mile down from there. So, wanted to share that first and foremost, heard that was kind of in the works, but just got the final notice on that. So I think as we look to 2025, obviously, we have a lot of other requests, but obviously, now we need to match that other 50%. So, they did $700,000. Our initial estimate for that area was 1.5 million. So, we're on the hook for relatively $800,000. So, the other half, or slightly, you know, more than that of what they matched. So, not sure, but, you know, I don't know if the Board wants to do additional sidewalks above and beyond that. Typically, we have a $200,000 budget, so that would, you know, much exceed our normal budget, but I think this was a one-time, or once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. So thankfully, the County looks and is willing to match with that. So, I know the supervisor, you had two small sidewalks. You were hoping to add to that.
Yeah, I mean, I can mention that. You don't have the sheet that shows all the requests.
If you go back, I think the link was in the last periods.
Because I'll say a couple of things. One is, this, the county proposal, or the idea of going down Plank Road and then up Jackson, also satisfies some of the people that were here that requested sidewalks, which is good. And then there's a few spots between houses on Five Mile that wouldn't be, I don't know what the number would be, it wouldn't be significant in terms of the overall number.
So you're talking, there's two houses north of Bowman's Farm Market on Five Mile, so there's a two-house gap between, would be the Watersong Neighborhood and...
Does it show on this map right now?
It does.
Okay.
So if you can zoom in on the map. And we did actually get, which is very nice on our end, let's see, I don't know, personally, but they have already offered easements for it, so that makes it especially easy on our end. But those are, it's like 1574 and something on Five Mile line, so that would be just a two-house or two-lot piece, so if you go up, it would be this little gap piece.
And this would also satisfy some of the folks that wanted to get this all connected.
So that piece right there, so that's the Watersong Neighborhood to the north, there's a two-house gap, one's kind of a big white farmhouse sits up on the side of the road, and then there's a small house next to it, so the Watersong Neighborhood just put in their piece connecting to the south, and then we've got sidewalks where the big number 18 is, that goes past Bowman's Farm Market, it goes past the neighborhood to the south, already has sidewalks in, and then would fill in that, that last gap and that quadrant. And then, I see both of those homeowners have reached out to me and said, we're ready, willing, and able to grant an easement, you know, as needed for those. So if that was an add, the other portion would be, as I say, you know, that piece going north from where Carrie has it up to Plank, so that piece is what we're doing. And then, eastward over to Jackson, and then Jackson down, and then connecting at Penfield Center Road, and that's what we asked the County for, and that's what they're matching the 50% on.
Do we have cost estimates for those two adds?
The two adds would be about $40,000.
Total?
Total.
So it would be...
So, for 1.5 million, it would be 1.5, and then 40,000 would be a small, small addition onto that.
So my, yeah.
Approximately 840,000 total that you are looking for from the Board? Does that, sorry, Jeff, I...
No, go ahead.
Does that 840, is that on top of the 200,000 that's already been budgeted, or are you looking for a budget amendment for the delta?
So that's part of the conversation, is want to make sure the Board doesn't want to go above and beyond that. I put in my budget for 800,000. So, in lieu of the 200, I just put in 800, so it wouldn't be an additional 200 on top of that. So, we also can look at, and I need to speak with our new comptroller, some of the money that has been going into sidewalk waivers this Board grants goes to a separate fund, so we can also look at allocating that into the 800,000. So we've been 200 usual, so we've got 600 extra. We can look at, you know, and I think there's a couple hundred thousand in that budget for sidewalk waivers that other developers have paid in, that could be added in, that would help to kind of, you know, take that additional monies, or, you know, take that delta down a little bit.
I guess, I just thought of something else. I mean, one thought, and maybe it was answered, is if we're going to do this county program and spend 800,000, we wouldn't add another 200 that we normally do. And I guess I thought of, we could also reconsider '26 whether we do sidewalks or not, because we're doing so much next year. I guess that's, that's one thought moving forward. But we got to take it into the county 50% match, so, so we'll make it work.
And there were, at the meeting, there were several sites that people, residents spoke out about that really sounded like we need to do something. So I would not, I would not forego anything in 2026, if possible, but, yeah.
Oh, I'm with you.
Look at it again, and as we do every year, we ask for input from the public and have other opportunities, and hopefully, there's other, other grants. You know, obviously, every sidewalk is important to somebody. They ask for it. We're trying to get around town as much as we can. This is a, you know, would be a huge project and a huge add to the town to, you know, connect, you know, new neighborhoods, connect to, we've got shoots, we've got, you know, Bowman's, we've got other, you know, destination locations, and hopefully, this, you know, now provides churches, parks, you know, this connects now from Jackson Road down to this park here at Veterans Memorial, that would provide connections, you know, on Five Mile down to Rothus Park, so I think these sidewalks would be a...
We're trying to plan progress.
We're trying. You know, obviously, we'll need to talk to the, you know, the homeowners, and we'll have the secure easements, and, you know, I'm sure we're going to have some, you know, bumps along the way, but, you know, if the Board is comfortable with that, you know, I'll contact surveyors tomorrow, and we've got to get them going, and then get into design and, you know, get a bid package going by the end of the year, so we can show that the money's been, you know, allocated towards, you know, sidewalks in this year, and then obviously, would be built, you know, next summer, so it'd be well ahead of the 2026, you know, for the...
Completion.
Completion time.
So I'm sorry, yeah.
Go ahead.
So a quick question, and you just said it, is, do we have money in the budget to do the engineering? We do the engineering this year for next year's...
We do not. So part of that, in that 1.5, was the design and engineering, so that part of this would allocate to that. We'll have to look through the end of this year, since we're talking about next year's budget. So through this year, can we use money out of the, you know, the funds that were already, you know, allocated? I do have some survey budget this year. I have some other stuff. I don't have full quotes, so once I go out and get a quote from an engineering firm for survey and design, you know, talk to the comptroller of what we've got left in this year's budget, and then I maybe go back to the Board saying, we need to amend our budget this year to get those, you know, allocated, and then obviously, the rest would be into construction, would fall under the 2025 budget, and I've already submitted in that, and the Board will see that shortly, that, you know, our half is in our engineering budget for next year.
Okay, so can we take the issues one at a time?
Sure.
So we've got two asks from the Board, right? With the 1.5 for the sidewalks that have already been delineated, right, are we going to match the 50%? I understand funding, we're going to have to figure that out, and I see ARPA as one of the other action, or, for discussion tonight, but action item, so how does the Board feel about the 1.5 to secure the 50% match?
I, I agree. I would like to see that, funding that money, because again, this match, is something that's not going to happen.
Yeah.
So yes, aye.
In favor?
In favor.
Favor, Jeff, how do you feel?
Yeah, absolutely in favor.
Okay, so let's, let's hold on the funding for just a second. So second issue, about the two additional adds for the two streets that were not budgeted and not yet allocated. Are we in favor of the, the two additional sidewalks at the $40,000 cost?
Yeah, I think they're important to this area, this project itself, so I would be in favor of that.
Yeah, I can support it, though. I am concerned that there's a lot of needs, and I don't know what put them in front of all the other needs. That's my concern.
I mean, to me, and just my conversations, was they came out and offered easements. So to me, that, that's a huge benefit, you know, as we go through all the rest, it's going to be a discussion and conversation with anybody else. So, as I share with anybody that asks for sidewalks, if you can get a petition of your neighbors, if you can get them to agree that they'll grant an easement, that makes my life a heck of a lot easier, you know, as we saw earlier this year with Shoe Craft. We initially got a petition, said they were all supportive, we went full speed ahead, we did survey, we did design, and then, once we got it together, then half the group said, well, maybe not, so that project stopped, and now we're looking to allocate money somewhere else. So, as anybody listening at home, I always put out there, hey, if you guys are willing and able to, you know, grant an easement on your property and work with the Town for it, that makes it much easier on our end and coordinates...
So I have to ask, as you brought up Shoe Craft, as I remember it, the reason people changed their mind was because of it was going to impact, we were going to have to cut down trees, right? That was...
Some, yeah. I mean, some was trees, some was location, but, you know, until we go out and there's, you know, we've got to avoid catch basins along the street where the utility poles are located, so that pushed us a little bit further back than people might have hoped or thought. That necessitated easements, and then we start talking about that, then, you know, some people had, you know, second thoughts.
Can we, do we know, is there any similar situation with these two?
These, verbally, they've said they're supportive of it.
I mean, there's no situation where, oh, look at, we're coming out here, and you're going to, we're going to go back further, and...
There's sidewalks in either end, so I think, I've talked to them both on the phone, and said, if you look at the sidewalk this way, and you look at the sidewalk that way, that's where we're going. So I think it's...
Seems like a clear path.
We would hope it's clear, and they understand, and say, look that way, look that way, I'm not doing anything fancy in the middle. We're going to connect the two dots.
Drawing a straight line.
But again, this...
The other benefit, though, right, is we're connecting two dead-end sidewalks.
People won't have to get off the sidewalk and come out of the shoulder and then get
back on.
Or personal property.
Yeah.
Or...
People start walking through to connect the sidewalks, now you're walking on people's ground.
For me, that's what makes those maybe a little higher.
Yeah. And again, this will be a 2025 project, so these are not slated for this year. This would be, you know, added into next year's construction.
All right.
Okay.
Is it out of order to ask about '24's projects and scheduling, and where?
Sure. Well, I don't know if you want to finish your...
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Finish your vote first, and then we can address that.
Okay, so it sounds like all in favor of the two additional adds at the 40,000, and I'm assuming, Jeff, you are in favor, because you brought it up, right?
Yep.
You're good with it?
Yep.
Okay. So then, the, so, the, at least, then, Engineering Department has some clear direction, so those two adds. Now then, for funding, I heard you say a couple things of having to talk with the comptroller, the sidewalk waiver fund, and then, if no other monies can be found, potentially ARPA, right? If it hasn't already been earmarked for, it's something else tonight. So what are you asking the Board to do today?
You just gave me the direction I needed, so...
Great.
Well, we'll pursue that. I'll come back to the Board with numbers. I'll come back with survey and design numbers. I'll come back with what we have in the funds, and then we can talk...
Cool.
You know, where all that is allocated from.
Bob's question now.
You can... So yes, this year, we have, our sidewalk contractor is scheduled for the end of August. So we're working right now with Birchcrest is coming along to do some tree work on Five Mile Line. So we've got, if you go down a little bit, Carrie, so the first blue blob here, so we've got a one-house gap there. We've got to do a small retaining wall. We've been in conversations with the property owner. We've got a tree to remove there, and then we've got a retaining wall to put in. We're getting final quotes on the retaining wall, so that should be going in in August. On the north end, we've just got some tree clearing to do, so if you go up a little bit on Five Mile north, so that's Rothus Park, the green blob, so then we...
First of all, for the folks at home, the blue blob, very technical term.
Blue blob and green blobs and lines. So then, going north, we're doing that portion of Five Mile up to Shoe Craft on the bend, so this piece will be going in in August, end of August into September. We've got some tree clearing to go on that, so that's going in this year. The piece that's under, it looks like a little house up on the horizontal here, we've got a one lot...
You lost me.
Space that is Plank Road.
I'm going to do this.
So Plank Road, I'm just trying to get Carrie-oriented, so Plank Road, that portion is going in the summer, so there's a one-house gap, kind of surrounding the Crown Point Neighborhood on Plank Road. We have a small...
Just east of the church and the pond.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a very small piece in front of Gentles Farm Market, or what was, they still call Gentles Farm Market. That piece is going in, that little, yep, that spot right there, that's going in the summer. And then the last piece is in the Willow Pond Neighborhood, and that is through CDBG, or Community Development Block Grant funding. That piece is going in, will be in August this year, so that's...
And the sidewalk is a lot more narrow than this depiction.
In the Willow Pond Neighborhood, De Orange, area to the right is Wegmans Plaza.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Target, and then this is in the Willow Pond Neighborhood, in that PD area is putting a sidewalk in there. So those four or five locations are on this year's agenda budget, are designed, and are going to be in construction in the next month or two.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. I've asked that question multiple times, so I always like to hear it again, because I, I need the refresher. Thanks.
If ARPA funds are allocated for 2025, will you have sufficient time and runway to get the design and whatever contracts before the end of the year?
That's why I'm asking for decision tonight, so I'll, as I say, I'm calling the surveyors tomorrow. Likely, we'll have to outsource, just due to the size of all of that. The two small ones, we can do in-house. We can likely do some portions of it, but just due to the length and size of it, we already have, obviously, other projects going on this year, so likely we'll have to outsource that to an engineering firm, but work with them to get that designed done this summer, and then hopefully get a bid package out this fall for that, so then it would be into...
So it's possible.
2025. Yeah, that's mine.
Okay. Thank you.
My hope and plan. Thank you, Board.
Okay. So we have an action item for this, or not necessarily?
We need a resolution, as long as we document it in the minutes.
Okay.
That gives me my direction, and then we'll take it from here.
Okay. Well, we can move on to ARPA. Want to bring it up, Carrie?
I'm bringing that up right now for everyone.
So one thing I just throw out there, and may, I'm not sure who's aware, but number one, that number was an estimate, and I think the actual number is 202, and change or so? Is that correct?
Sorry, give me, yeah, I'll pull it up. I meant to...
So we got the final bill?
Yep.
Yep. I'll, I'll find it.
It's right around 202.
Mark and I can race to find.
Oh, I was doing math.
Oh.
What are, number 539, change?
Oh, it was $202,544.22 is the actual cost for the project. So, I'll put that in there as an update.
Jeff, do you know where that would have been budgeted from?
I think it's-
I believe it wasn't budgeted. It was a, I believe the, the board just said, we'll allocate funds at such time. We know what the final dollars are. So, I don't believe-
Was it captured in the, in facilities budget, though, already?
I don't believe so.
I thought, I thought DPW director, former director, had said that that is already in their budget, that-
I know it was a-
We had said, well, we could allocate, but-
I know it was an itemized project, but I don't know if the funds were-
The financial aspect was-
I don't know if the funds were allocated in the budget for it. But I know it was in the capital improvement project. But I think, without knowing what the final cost was, it wasn't-
Wasn't in the budget.
That sounds familiar.
Just my recollection, but-
Okay.
The reason I'm asking, because that, that project's done, right? And we have to pay for it. And so, if we don't have it budgeted, then I think it's kind of like a done deal. We have to use ARPA, right? Because we've gotta pay for it somehow. So, if-
So, I think that's why it was number one on here, is it needs to be paid for now that it's been completed.
So, how, how does the board feel? Do, do we want a takeaway for Tim to find out if it's budgeted somewhere?
Yeah, let's, let's confirm that.
Okay. Can you please confer with the comptroller? Would like to get some idea of where, if at all, it was captured. And then, can we get an update on the DPW current budget and all report, all departments reporting up through DPW? So, facilities, sewer. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanna say it was painted out of fund balance, and it wasn't a budget item, but it was a known item. But we'll get the detail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
General unassigned.
I mean, I think it can be allocated from the general fund, or it can be paid through that.
I thought it was in the capital unassigned. But I could be wrong as well. I'm trying to recall the conversation. I know that.
Okay. All right, Tim, if you can maybe get us an update in the next two weeks, if possible?
Then we've paid for it. I mean, it's not like the bill's outstanding. So, right?
Yeah, we're not faulting on our payments. They've been paid, and our, the asphalt, I mean, we did the work, but the asphalt company's been paid.
I guess the thought, yeah.
So, what is this, then? Is this the price for asphalt?
That is the price for the asphalt. So, we did the work, yeah. Asphalt's not cheap. So, our crews, Works Highway, did all the milling, did the paving.
It was the asphalt and the-
The mill.
The mill.
The cost of the mill was not ours.
The cost of the mill.
Oh, okay.
The ground force for the mill, that was us. And then, there was also the tack coat that they put down before the paving.
Okay, so like, all materials, just not inclusive of, of labor?
Yep.
All right.
And then, the mill would have been subcontractor for that.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, the website, you know, I think it's important to, you know, it's, it's gonna be, like a lot of these items, whether they come out of ARPA or not, there's something we're gonna have to pay for one way or the other at some point. And it's interesting, you know, as I understand websites these days, once you go through the process to start building them, and you build them, by the time you're done, you gotta start the process over again, because, I don't know if it's a three- or four-year life, things are moving quickly. And it plays into some of the conversations on IT in general within the town that we need to address. But this, this is something that would not be done in-house. You'd have to contract out, and likely, we'd do a, you know, RFP of some kind. And then, yeah.
Can I just ask, what is the red text for, for the dollars?
Forgive me. That was from a carryover from the original list, when placeholder numbers had been put in.
Okay.
And then, we adjusted them. We highlighted them, so that town board could see that the price had changed, that-
Okay.
I didn't, but that, at this point, we could just do this and-
Okay, that's fine.
And be done.
And one thing that I'd like to see or understand and go back to is, is what items that are, we're not gonna use from ARPA that will end up in the budget anyways, which I think there's a, a number of them in there, that have to get done, or will be part of a budget if they're not allocated, you know, from ARPA funds. The next one, the reselling town hall, I mean, it goes to the cost. It's, and that 160, though, is, is all in, not us. It's all in for the whole area, I believe. And again, it's an estimate. But that's another thing that'll have to be addressed at some point. And I think it makes sense. And then, connecting the food shelf, and then the pump stations are important, too. And certain pump stations are more important than others. And I'm sure the sewer department has a, a list, right, of... Carrie, I don't know how this all adds. Remind me what we need. Is it 500,000 we have to utilize?
I was trying to find that information. I think it was 550, 60,000. It's somewhere between 550 and 560, if memory is serving me.
Is, is number four, is that number accurate, that connecting to a sanitary sewer? 20,000 doesn't seem all that much after the asphalt costs.
I was gonna say, that seemed really high.
It's PVC piping, if that makes you feel any better about how-
You gotta dig it, you gotta-
And I think that's our crews doing the work.
Oh, our crews are doing, okay. Gotcha.
So, I believe that's us and our crews, we own the, the property of the, the food shelf. So, that would be the-
We got the equipment.
We've got the equipment, so it's just the material cost.
Okay.
And to go back to the resealing town hall, that number looks small now, after looking at the repaving of the community center, when we did all the work, and just saying.
Are you doing that math?
I'm just seeing what we have.
So, do, do the math, Carrie. Someone to help me add that up a little bit.
That was what, another 15% higher than our estimate?
I mean, including, if you only put in 100,000 for the, so, I went off the 559, minus the 202,000, 100,000 for the website rebuild, 160,000 for the parking lot ceiling, 20,000 for the food shelf, and 80,000 for the pump station. I come $3,000 short. So, it pretty much uses the remainder of the funds.
And that would only be doing one pump station. That 80,000 is per station.
Correct. That's one, one pump station. So, you'd have to prioritize that. And then, I think, going forward, we look at adding in, you know, a pump station or two per year and-
The highlights in yellow?
Yeah.
Those were, when Jeff reviewed the list, he, these are the ones he identified as his prior, like, his priority. Is that cor, that was correct, right?
Sure, that sounds good to me. I don't know why they're yellow.
The list is pared down from-
And then, the remainder of the-
I, I watched the-
We just couldn't figure out why they're somewhere yellow.
Yeah, those were-
Yeah.
And I was trying to wind down, I guess, some, some of the smaller items that could still make sense in a budget.
I'm just thinking that those backup generators are more important than resealing the town hall parking. I mean, I-
Yeah, I mean, you can make that argument. I think they're both important.
Am I wrong in that? Thoughts?
They could do three, three backup generators and look at sealing the parking lot.
I think they're both important. I, I would put, I would put the town parking lot and natural, the, the backup generators, more sewer lining for sewage, things, things of actual infrastructure. So, just looking at the, the list that was whittled down, and I appreciate the conversations that the, the board had at the last work session, did listen to all that and get caught up. So, I, I would like to allocate to all of the infrastructure projects here in some denomination. So, that would be one, three, four, five, and Rose Eight.
So, at the last meeting, it seemed like one of the things that was the top contender was the security cameras at the parks. And that's off the list now?
Oh, it's number nine.
I mean, it's, it's still on there.
I mean, it's off, off the list of top contenders.
Oh, oh, oh.
Because it seemed like, it seemed like the gas generators for the sewers was really kinda consensus item. And then, it seemed like the security cameras ranked pretty high after that.
Yeah, I, I guess that's another, maybe it's part of an overall discussion on security.
How about that number? Where did we get the 500 for security cameras? That seems-
Yeah, I'm not sure, honestly.
I believe some of that is we'd have to bring fiber, other stuff, to park locations. So, I think if it's existing, and we've already got Wi-Fi or fiber at a location, it's easy if you're bringing something, I don't know where we have it, Jenny Philbrick Park, or we have it, you know-
Like Rothfuss Park.
Or something. I don't think we have any infrastructure there. So, that would, the, the additional cost is if you've gotta run fiber, you know, or something else over to connect those parks and internet and-
We already have fiber at Veterans Memorial Park, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so-
So, some of that, cameras at this property would be, obviously, the cost of the cameras. And again, I'm not a security expert. It would be cheaper and easier. Rothfuss Park or Sherwood Fields, or some of the, you know, more remote park areas would, you'd have to incur the cost of running fiber network there to be able to have the cameras and tie them in, or, or bring power or other stuff into that. So, that number is high. I mean, you can separate out and say, we'll allocate to the Veterans Park first, and that would be a much smaller number to do that here.
So, just-
Because, going back to the intent of the ARPA funds and the lessons learned through the pandemic and things like that, that would just seem like a, a more applicable item than some of the others, to me.
So, what if we, it, it's helpful to know how that cost came up to be. So, for the ones that we already have, the infrastructure kinda built in, and like, the cost of the camera, I think, is less than 500,000, right? What if we, can we ask the Mr. Campione for a takeaway, to kinda get more of an itemized list? And maybe if the cost of the camera is completely making it up, it's just $1,000 for the parks that have the existing infrastructure, we can get that up and rolling. And then, for the parks that don't have it, maybe we can talk about something more cost-effective, non-use of ARPA, like increased security at those. Because if they have it, again, on, on a device, or have eyes in the sky for parks that have the camera, then presumably, they could be monitoring that while at a park that doesn't have the infrastructure?
And I might also, facilities might also need to be included in that conversation, because it's about physical connection. And-
Okay.
Facilities, I think, is who manages the, the security systems that we currently have here at Town Hall and on, at Veterans Park. Am I wrong about that?
Yeah, they're the ones that, like, would run all the wire. They'd hook up the cameras, so they would have a better idea of, I think, that, of cost of, that'd be Jim Crackman and-
Right.
His crew.
My guess is that's where the number came from, or at least, he was included. And, and you touched on it, but what I was thinking is exactly what you touched on, which is, if we have cameras, then how are we monitoring them? Are they being monitoring all night long? And who's doing that? Is it security or not? And does that take away from something, having a camera versus a physical presence? So, it's another discussion that fits into the whole camera. But I would say, cameras are important. We need them more than ever, even here. And we'll, we'll get into brush drop-off, but we're, a couple of challenges here. People are dropping brush off after we're done, and they're dropping it off behind here where the mulch pile is. And it'd be nice to know who's doing that, you know, after hours. And security, obviously, can't be everywhere at once. So, I think it's important, whether it fits in or not, you know. Either way, we're gonna have to get it funded one way or the other. But it'd be nice to know exactly what that number, where it came from, 500,000.
And I think the other goal was, if I remember correctly, was to try to connect some of these systems together, so that they can be looked at.
Totally.
Remotely.
Remotely, and then, not having to go to different locations to access that recorded data. And I'm guessing, maybe that number included that. But maybe we could pare that down a little bit and understand what's the dollars that would take to at least get us there, as well as accommodate, maybe, veterans in some of these other locations that are maybe easier to get.
Yeah, and I, I would say that even the community center and the library should be included in a purview. I, I know that they don't have the greatest system over there as well.
So, again, hit the timeline for us, either Jeff or maybe Carrie, is, we've gotta have-
It has to be earmarked by end of year.
End of year earmark.
And money's gotta be expended by the end of 2026. So, the dollar amount has to be known by the end of this year, and then, has to be spent by the end of 2026.
Okay. So, it's not '25, it's '27?
'26, yeah.
So, if I, if I'm hearing everyone, then we'd highlight nine, and Carrie, since you have the mouse, I think it's eight, not seven?
Oh, forgive me, yeah.
No worries.
No, no, you're right.
So, Tim, is it, would it be your takeaway on the facilities follow-up, or would you like me to follow up?
I could, I could follow up with a-
So, for security cameras, to clarify the ask, it's going to be understanding all the parks and town facilities, inclusive of the library, community center, and town hall, where infrastructure currently exists? The cost estimate, best-known cost estimate for the camera, and any wiring that, that might be needed? Just, just trying to bifurcate the cost of materials versus infrastructure, and then, all other parks that have no infrastructure, so that we can kind of see if we can tackle that in phases? Okay.
As well as including the connectivity of existing systems into one.
Okay. So, then, Carrie, I think we can, if, if everyone's in agreement, we would collapse the list even further to those highlighted. Jeff, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, great.
And then, because already, if we just total that up with security cameras being a TBD, but we are in excess of the 560, and then, understanding that the engineering department may come back and tell us, we actually need more money, right? So, Tim, if you can follow up on those costs before the next work session, and then, maybe we can have a soft commitment to kind of whittle this down and earmark it by end of year? Okay. Jeff, you comfortable with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
I'll, so I'm not doing table configurations right now. I'll send this list around to the town board.
All right. Thanks, Carrie. Thanks, everybody. All right. Last item, last action item, brush drop-off discussion. And Tim, I guess we could start with you. You can let everybody know how it's going now. And, and there was a question that was brought up on, you know, Town of Brighton's helping us out. I don't know how that stands. I know, maybe you can touch on that, based on what you know.
So, right now, we have, we started, we've had, like, kinda soft numbers beforehand, and they track with what we've actually been keeping track of. So, it's around, on average, it's about maybe 17 vehicles for this past week. That includes a little mini windstorm we had on a Friday, so that, like, you would see the more, on Monday, July 15th, we had a couple more vehicles there, just because of that windstorm. We broke it down where, you know, let's say, July, or, yeah, July 11th, 14 vehicles, five were contractors, and that would take us, the DPW, five trips to Brighton to unload all that, to take all that stuff to their dump site, which is about a 30-minute round trip for us and our DPW to get there and back for another load. Right now, our agreement with Brighton, it's pretty, it's a good, it's a, it's a good agreement right now. Nothing written in stone as of right now. But we have been, for the lack of veterans, playing nice with them. They've asked us if we've dropped off. They require logs no bigger than five feet. Sometimes, there was some dropped off there. We had to go send some chainsaw operators up there to cut them up, so it can fit into their grinder. But as you can see, it's been pretty consistent, around the same numbers for the past week. And then, so Mondays are usually busier on our end, because Brighton is working 410s. We cannot drop stuff off to them on Fridays. So, we take that, however many loads, to our shop and drop them off in an area there. And then, we take it all on Monday to Brighton. We have had some, like Jeff alluded to, some, I wouldn't call them major mishaps, but people dropping off over the weekends by the mulch pile, some people dropping them off after hours in the back parking lot. And we also have had a couple brave souls go through our construction site and drop them off where it used to be at the DPW. So, even with our new big message board sign that says Town Hall, or brush drop-off behind Town Hall, people just still drive through the gates and manage to drop some stuff off there.
What types of vehicles were the contractors using?
So, we just, I just had our crew member that's out there, running the loader, he just wrote down contractors. That's usually dump trailers, nothing like two, not, nothing like six-wheelers or 10-wheelers or anything like that. It's usually powered dump trailers, dual axle, that kind of dump, that, that kinda contractors.
Thank you.
Has there been any discussion about going back to proof of ID or residency? Jeff, maybe you've been more connected to that conversation than-
I, I guess that's a logistical thing, because right now, it's just, we have the, a truck driver and a loader operator. It could happen. It's just getting to the point of then documenting everything. The way the system used to be, they'd stop in the office, they'd sign the book. COVID happened, and then- happened and then distance contact and it was just basically a...
I'm just thinking back years ago when the drop off was behind a current DPW.
Yeah.
Pull up and somebody would just show them your ID, that you lived in Penfield and they just, okay, go over here.
Yep, that's something that we usually do and anytime that I try to stop somebody, I ask them, are you Penfield resident? They say yes, take their word for it, or if they're working within the town, if it is contractor, what address are you coming from? And every once in a while we would, if it seems like a, a not truthful answer, we, we would send a foreman over there to check out if actually tree works being done on that property. But again, busy schedules, they can't be a permanent job of chasing down.
And Tim, it's a little more difficult here because Vincenzo's in the loader. There's often someone in a dump truck waiting. So for them to get out of the truck and go through that may be a little more difficult in this setting as a...
Yeah, it would be a probably, right now it's a two-person operation, the truck driver and the loader operator. Then you would probably, just judging on how busy it is or like 14 vehicles, there'd be another person on the ground just checking IDs.
Would it for 14? I guess I, you know...
It's, it's pretty consistent. It's not like people are lining up around the block, they're consistently dropping off, but it's, um...
That's why I just wonder if
Yeah.
With the two guys, they could cover 15 vehicles.
Yeah, we could.
I don't know, I'm...
I mean, we could make cap and whatever we want.
Yeah, we can. Then again, that leads into, that leads into the next, um, uh, options. That's obviously on the table of checking, going back to checking IDs and it's all basically up to the board to decide, um, what we want to do, the current practices, what we have going on right now.
So Tim, thanks, thanks for bringing up the additional options, I think, from the public participation session on June 5th, June 5th. So both the board and staff clearly heard the resident concerns and there are various, I think that we need, we need to discuss them more in full, but like you've already captured, right? We've been trying to be mindful and really hear their concerns about traffic, road safety, just increased vehicular traffic in that area. And I think it was Sue Rooney who specifically indicated that the left turn is not safe and unclear if town trucks or what other types of vehicles have been utilizing and are anticipated to, um, to be utilizing that site. And so many of the residents there, I think we saw the letter and petition that was circulated. So I see that the staff has, has been working on that and that there are options for the board to consider. So if, if we want to go through those, Tim, so, um, one idea is to really limit the vehicular traffic during, during high times of morning commute or when there might be buses or folks heading home, et cetera. So I'm looking at alternate one. So curbing the hours from nine to 2:30, shortening the days, um, instead of open all year, um, open from April through October. So again, uh, when Rochester experiences snow or where there might be increased road hazards anyway, to not add larger vehicles in that road. And, and I think we all can all agree that, you know, November, December, January, there's not going to be a lot of tree work anyway, so we can further limit it and then, right, going through until we start spring cleaning really in April. So I think if that is something that the board is willing to consider, that means operations are in effect for five months as opposed to all year round. And then we can again, limit the hours. We can go down further restrictions, but I think at least to first start, I just want to gauge the temperature of the board. Does that kind of compromise with the concerns that were raised and the need for brush drop services for all other residents?
Yeah, one, one thing I just was thinking that it'd be good to know specifically on bus traffic, when, and we could find that out, when buses are down that road and when they're not, which we could tweak the twi, the time to accommodate it, you know, if there was a bus, if there was a lot of bus activity.
I think most schools start it by 8:40 in, in the Penfield School District.
Yeah, I'd just be wondering if
We can...
Drop off more, but just a thought.
Oh, oh, I see, I see, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Oh, a drop off, uh...
In the afternoon, like...
Um, 3:20.
Okay. But maybe not in this, this road, but yeah.
2:30 is high school, kids, yeah.
I guess it'd be good to know and that might dictate a little bit the time in the afternoon that made sense to stop, that's all.
But I, yeah, I hear what you're saying, that makes sense.
And one little thing on, just because I am a, I used to be more of a tree guy. Actually, winter time's a great time to work on trees because there's not leaves, you don't have to worry about poison ivy, but in terms of transporting in the winter, that's a whole nother thing. So, yeah, I'm with you on that.
Tim, do you have any sense for what the Saturday drop offs are bringing for...
So Saturday drop offs, um, that would be about, we do have one this Saturday, so please, if anybody's watching, yeah, um, it's going to be at the DPW like the...
And that being one of the...
Yes, yes. So yeah, that's going to be at the DPW. We have been taking after that about, you know, five to seven to 10, depending on how busy it is, loads to Brighton on the Monday after that. And that's all in front of our shops still, so...
So we don't yet have as much utilization data for a Saturday? Is that what I'm saying?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, and one thing to keep in mind is a lot of the concerns that we heard tonight, if I'm one of those residents, I'm asking why won't the same thing happen there? People just dropping off after hours, leaving it there even though there's a gate, leaving it in front of the gate. Um, you know, where do you take all that drop off when they, are we going to mulch it there? Are we going to still have to remove it?
So I think part of the idea was to, during the, the potential design of Gloria Drive was making the road wide enough to get the county chipper in there so we can chip the stuff there. And then that would give us the option to bring the mulch back to give, hand out to the residents in the springtime. As of right now, um, once that pile's gone, we're not going to have any mulch to hand out to the residents.
Yeah, what we drop off at Brighton is they just process it and off it goes. So we're not getting any mulch back from the tree and branches that are, that are dropped there. So as Tim said, the pile over here, once this is gone, under our current setup, we're out and we don't have anything else as a, as a give back to residents.
Jeff, I think you said this, um, to, to folks expressing their, their concerns last month. I mean, no one on the board or the staff, or no one's trying to make lives miserable for people, right? If we start with the curtailing the operations and then a month in, if no one's following the rules and it's like a complete disaster and it does like make life miserable, I think the board at that time can completely halt operations at Gloria, either remove it back to Town Hall or unfortunately completely halt operations. Yeah, suspend it, delay it, right?
Absolutely.
So I, I don't think by moving forward with at least some operational plan locks us in, like the town can always adapt. We can tweak operations, we can make adjustments. I think we're, we're always trying to balance competing interests and we've got to, to make decisions that, that try to, you know, serve some good, right? We won't make everyone happy, but I, I think again, like, so thank you for the, the staff to be responsive and putting the alternate one and two together where we are trying to balance. So, so again, but trying to gauge the temperature of the board, are we amenable to at least some adjustments to the operational plan or is, we need to make some action. If I understand what the MOU, this is now the last month for which the town can act or we will lose access to that, to that potential property. I mean, is that correct supervisor?
I think it's a, yeah, it's a good possibility.
And signing this MOU simply reserves the right to use that space. I mean, I want the public to understand that, that, that right now all we're saying is, yes, we want to reserve that space, but you know, this is a service I would like to continue, but I also am very concerned about all of the concerns that the public brought up. I think that there is a way to attempt to balance it. Like you said, if it starts to show signs of not working, it can be curtailed or it can be ended. But our own, our only options are Gloria Drive to continue at the Town Hall if Brighton continues or to end the service. And I, I think that trying to give everyone, you know, something and do the best for all the residents, um, I'm in favor of, you know, reserving this and then, you know, attempting to move ahead as long as it's curtailed enough that it feels like it, that safety will be accommodated.
Yeah, and I would agree with everything you said, Kevin, and I think that the time issue is getting the MOU signed and in place, right? We can continue to work on, um, is there a timeframe, Tim, that would work best for you? Cause I see like a hybrid of these alternate options and current practice in my mind.
This was, this was just a, a list of...
Yeah.
Ideas.
Yeah.
A starting point. We're gonna say one from column A and one from column B and...
And that's kind of what I'm, but what's our timeframe that we would have to finalize that?
We could, I mean, I'd...
I mean, we've got to construct it. So I mean, we've been continuing on, we've got to do an NOI, which is a notice of intent with the DEC. So we've got to finalize our stuff. Once the board says, yes, we're looking to go back to Gloria Drive, we've got to complete our, our portion of that. The agreement needs to be signed and then after the, if the board's okay, the school district signs, they have to go out and construct it. So they've got to, you know, we've got to put a, a small pond in that's required by DEC and EPA, that's not a town requirement. So we've got to put a small pond in, we've got to do some scrub brush tree removal to make the area fit for it. We've got to do some entrance improvements, put the gate in, you know, so there's at least a month's probably worth of work after the agreements are signed and everybody's on board. So again, we can continue to tweak these in that timeframe and, you know, get that...
So your filing with the DEC really wouldn't be impacted if we chose, you know, alternate one or...
No, for us, it's, it's stormwater related. So we say we're, we're creating two acres of impervious surface that's, you know, adding stone out there or millings to create a pad area. Based on that, then we have to design a pond accordingly. We then file a permit with the DEC saying we're installing a pond, we're treating this amount of water that we expect coming off the property. The hours of operation, the days of the week.
Okay.
I think conservatively
That doesn't impact our stormwater...
Through September.
Through September.
I would say, correct, Tim, you think through September before that site's ready for use?
So it's like another...
Start of this year then? Because if it's through September, would we open it at Gloria for one month if we're looking at option?
That's if you picked that, if you picked that alternate.
Right, if we pick that alternate.
And an important consideration for me is that as we continue through this process, we'll continue to hear from the public on their thoughts on what we're doing. So it'll, there'll be some back and forth and some feeling of cooperation there and some feeling of responsiveness. It's not, you know...
Did, can I ask a question? Did we get any feedback? I know, um, Mr. Tate was going to look at talking to, um, I don't know, county, Department of Transportation about signage.
State DOT.
Yes, we did talk to the state DOT. Currently it is in compliance with the intersection head sign, the intersection sign. We did reach out to them about having a DPW brush drop off. They were looking at that and see if that fit under the MUTCD, which is the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So they have to see if it fits into the state highway regulations. So that was the last part they were following up on, but they looked at the rest of it. We provided them the counts of how many vehicles we look at, you know, showed them how many, what majority of the town, I think, even physically is north of 441. So, you know, I think more than half the town or 6040 would come, you know, from the north. So we said if we've got 15 cars a day and likely 10 of them are coming from the north, maybe four from the south, you know, four cars compared to the, the amount of cars on 441 into the state, unfortunately that's a drop in the bucket to them and that's a non, non-significant issue. Not that they're not worried about safety, but they look at, I mean, even in a subdivision, if it's less than 100 houses, 100 additional cars a day for them, that's, you know, it's not a traffic study, it's not anything else. So we have followed up with, you know, the East Side Residency, they've contacted their, their people, so, you know, they're well aware of it, you know, we followed the protocols, you know, with them, but they're looking at the one last piece of, you know, sometimes you have a sign saying library this way or hospital, you know, just to make that informational. And I know Carrie's gone to the step...
Created a, a Google map and an Apple map
Right.
Link so that that could be broadcast on website, flyers, anything so that if I'm trying to get there, it's going to pinpoint the driveway entrance and people won't be wandering on Penfield Road trying to figure out where a 2660 is. So I think...
Prove it into your GPS and it takes you right to the spot and that therefore people aren't confused and stopping on Penfield Road or at the top of the hill, so hopefully...
Or dumping at neighbors.
Or dumping in the wrong spot or wrong location, so...
So I, I mean...
We would have signage obviously in front of the location as well.
And the Saturday drop offs, um, that's fairly new, right?
Yeah.
That's only been in the last, um, and those are scheduled out?
Yep.
For some...
For the, for the whole year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
And they're not, they're not every Saturday?
No.
No, it's, it's once a month, once a month.
Is it anticipated that they would, if it was still here on Jackson Road hypothetically, would it still be a Saturday in October, November, December? Was that the plan?
I think it all depends on what the board agrees upon because right now it's, it's the last one would be, I believe it's, um, October. So right now, the weekend drop off, that one day, I think it's the third, the third Saturday of the month. It goes till October, then it starts back up in April. So right now that is just a service that we offer over the summertime.
For the Saturdays.
For the Saturday, just for the Saturdays, yes.
And Tim, what we're doing with that is bringing it to Brighton.
So yes, but we did, yeah, it's at our shop. We hold it over until the, the, we hold it over the weekend until Monday and then we bring all that to Brighton. And there are, there are things that we can start implementing, I'm very new with this. There's stuff we can start implementing tomorrow as far as getting people's names, addresses to start collecting dat, data on, where people are coming from, asking for licenses, but that would be the support of...
That's just one, I think we, my personal opinion is we should
We could start that tomorrow.
Re-implement something with
I agree.
Making sure that people aren't bringing their brush from other towns.
Absolutely.
And that may minimize that number, you know, even further. If you take off two or three that come every day that shouldn't be, then, you know, again, you're minimizing, you know, that impact or potential impact of those neighbors.
Then I guess where I was going with the Saturday comment was, you know, and again, maybe, right? Maybe it's just one of these boxes here in the matrix, but, you know, if we do shut it down for the heart of the winter months, you know, is there a period of time where maybe we do a Saturday, you know, just a Saturday?
Yeah, like a pop-up event or something like it.
Which could be canceled, right? If you get a snowstorm, guess what? We're, we're not gonna run this, this weekend. And unfortunately, my pile of brush has to stay in my yard an extra whatever.
We can, well, sorry.
No, so I'm just thinking, there might be some hybrid ways to...
Absolutely. One of the things that, I know it's ironic, but what we're doing now, and I don't know how many trips a day, just say four or five, that truck is going back and forth. The worst possible place to go is the drop off in Brighton. If you know where that is, it's the top of Browncroft. When our trucks try to take a left-hand turn out of there, it's like, I can't think of a worse place.
It's okay, you're turning right in, the, the, coming out of there is a little tougher.
And that's what the residents are going to say about, I mean...
I mean, that when you're crossing a five-lane highway to get out versus a two-lane highway.
Right, right. Their truck though, I, I'm trying to just keep thinking, the arguments we're making the residents have given us for Gloria Drive. So we have to think of the residents that live out in East Penfield, this isn't a service they requested, this is something the town's been doing. The town didn't put plans in place for it to continue while we're going construction, so we're looking at different things. And so we have to be very conscious. I like that we're going to alternates and that if, if we do run into where people are dropping things off, that we can, we can just put a halt on it because it is disconcerting if residents already aren't respecting it, you know? There's a certain lack of concern that they're not doing things properly, though some sane people, will they have more concern because they're going to Gloria? So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, my, my opinion is, is that it's not gated. We can't gate this. That would be, that is a gated area.
Right.
Yes.
That they might just leave.
So I would imagine that it would be
Fair, fair.
Less, instead of wide open where anybody can literally drive by any time of the night, which has happened before in parks and dropping leaves off and which we occasionally clean up when that does happen, but usually with the gated, I can think of sometime, it even up when that does happen, but usually with the gated, I can think of sometime, it even happened at the DPW, it was like once in a blue moon, once a year, somebody would just drop it off to the side of the gate because they got there at 4:00 and we end operations at 3:30, so it has happened in the past, but not as much as it has been with it being wide open here.
And we can get into a lot of details, but I was thinking too, you know, just that our trucks on Gloria Drive, it wouldn't be as the amount, you know, that's happening here, and even that could be discussed when that happens and when it doesn't, so anyway.
Yeah, to your point, to your point, if we're grinding it over there, I mean, now we're hauling trees and brushing branches and everything else, if we grind it every three, four months...
Three, yeah, three, four months.
Now it's compacted down, so you've got a lot less of our truck traffic, we're not doing it daily, we're going to stockpile it over there until the grinder, tub grinder shows up, they grind it, and then at that point, we would haul it out.
And I may have misspoke, sorry, Mark.
No, I was agreeing with your statement, that that would minimize our truck traffic that we're even seeing here right now.
That was just a good touch, and right or wrong, I'd said something at the last ledge session regarding, you know, picking up stuff that people just dump, and what I meant was just that, what Linda alluded to was if someone's dumping it at the gate, we're going to take care of it, and maybe there's a way to monitor, and maybe there's a way to get a camera system with a cellular system temporary to monitor it for a month, and so there's a lot of options, so.
So I don't want to minimize the traffic concerns, but I think, like, I agree with those, but I think that argument could be made literally at any other site, right? Once you introduce vehicular traffic, there's always a potential for...
Fair, fair, and it's not so much traffic, it's that left-hand turn as you're coming up with a blind spot, I think that was the key, so...
Yep.
Traffic, I don't think we're going to add a significant number, going back to what the state has told you and what's Department of Transportation, I agree, it's not the volume, it's just that spot.
But safety, so I think there are ways that we can, again, like, we can mitigate the concerns by a combination of alternates or even tweaking it altogether, I think we, there's consensus that, again, if we implement and it's just a completely terrible idea, the town is going to adjust, so, and I heard that the town staff is going to continue to work with DOT on the additional traffic safety in general, I do want to confirm, I think engineering was also going to ensure that there were no impact to streams, Mr. Moore had brought up some concerns, okay, so I just want to make sure, again, running down the list of everyone that spoke, that we've addressed some of their questions or suggestions, there was the question again of communication of this being temporary and wanting a certain end date, but I think we've answered that fully, is, did the board have anything else to add to that?
No, I think we determined that it was tough to put a date date to it, but I think we all, it was a consensus of this board that it was not going to live there beyond the project here on Jackson Road, help me if I'm covering that correctly.
And I think the goal, as we talked about, and maybe you just said it, is to move it back to the DPW in one form or the other within...
Yeah, I think in that way, you could, we could put a date out there, and if the DPW project is behind one, two, three months, we could come back here, but we could also say the date of the DPW project, we could add a buffer of a couple months as well and say, "That's our date," and then come back.
Sure.
Or just make it clear, so maybe if all, if this is implemented, if the town in that communication when we introduce the site with hours of operation, restrictions, limitations, et cetera, can make it more clear that this is going to be for the duration of construction only.
The IMA has that language directly in it as well.
Yep, but when we communicate to residents.
Resolution, okay.
No, the residents, not residents, okay, so if I, I think we've addressed everything, and there was one gentleman, Mr. Anders, that had suggested, he said, "Things the landfill up the road, Kennedy North would be a better spot," but I think that's a resounding no for the board.
We tried the south end of that property, and I think we were, weren't permitted by the county to tamper with what the county...
There are environmental concerns that...
The county had no interest originally in taking brush or anything else at the landfill, that's kind of, it's got the solar farm and it's got the landfill and it has its own stuff, that's why we were even looking at Kennedy Road, so there was, it was a non-starter for the county even looking at existing landfill.
And I think the tricky part was, I think that was used for brush drop off several years ago during, I'm trying to remember the event.
An emergency event, perhaps?
Could have been at that time, but I know, you know, they, they fall under DEC regulations and stuff and the cap, you know, you can't mess with the cap on the landfill, and they've got their own regulations to follow.
This board's preference would have been right there where there's a paved road and...
No doubt, no doubt, that was an initial conversation with the county, and that was a non-starter for them based on their own regulations, that's why we had initially looked next door at Kennedy Road, and that's, you know, why we had kind of started down that path.
Okay, because again, we can't have as much of this dialogue during public participation, but I just want to make sure that we go through each of their itemized concerns so that each resident understands that the staff and board were listening, so with everything that we said at this point, with the MOU, with the timeliness factor, otherwise it does preclude the town from future use, potential use, and Pete, I just want to confirm that signing the MOU does not obligate the town to implement anything, it merely reserves the right to act, is that correct?
Correct, it reserves for you the ability to use that property.
Okay, thank you for that confirmation, so if the board is comfortable, I'd like to make a resolution or make a motion for a resolution to be prepared at the next legislative session that authorizes the supervisor to sign that MOU to reserve our right to...
So can I interrupt for just a quick moment, I think because it was tabled at the last legislative session, it's already going to appear on the agenda under old business, and so then you would, do you want to, based on the rules and procedure, I think there's a...
So, yes, but, and Pete, I was going to make the resolution for, make a motion for the resolution with the caveat that the implementation date would be delayed until the town finalizes an operations plan.
Okay, so you're basic, so you're coming up with a...
It's a new resolution.
Yeah, so it'll be a new resolution.
Okay.
They want to include language that says that authorize, so authorizing the supervisor to sign the agreement but delaying commencement of operations until the operations plan is finalized and approved.
Excellent.
That's great.
So I think then it does, for the action items with the town, with the DOT, and again, looking to the town engineer for all of the environmental concerns and vetting those, it also gives us a chance to, again, fine-tune the details, again, try, I think you said it best, really, trying to balance all of the concerns, because again, they are legitimate, but we are trying to continue the service and we are trying to compromise as much as we can to serve all residents and continue the service, otherwise we have really no other options, so that is, that's the tweak that I'd like to add to the resolution to give the town staff time to do that as well.
So then, Peter, you can work with, because I think by, we can figure out a way to handle the old resolution that was tabled, and maybe if, with the new resolution introduced under right new business or under, then you could...
Draw the other resolution.
Yes, correct, we'll make that happen.
Okay, and Linda, does that kind of give you enough comfort to move forward as well?
With everything you just said, I am, I believe we can move forward.
Okay, then can I have a second to that motion, please?
I will second that motion, Candace.
Thank you.
Okay, Sue, vote, please.
Barry?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ackington?
Aye.
Teklisch?
Aye.
All aye?
Okay, so I don't know if I do this on our, in fact, I just want to, I guess, throw something out there that we had a group approach us regarding sidewalk plowing for Devonshire, and I just want to make sure we don't miss it to discuss it maybe at a future work session, and I don't think it's pressing because we got some time to figure out plowing, is it...
I think it was a petition.
It was a petition, okay, okay, so I just want to make sure we handle that or discuss it at some point in the future, does that make sense?
Maybe send something out to the board so we...
Yeah, it'll need to be added to a future work session, and we've already pulled up some mapping showing, and we'll provide that to the board, what we plow today versus if we had this, potentially open up all neighborhoods, so, you know, what that add would be, so we'll provide mapping and data ahead of the next work session, but just acknowledging that that petition was received and the board still has that as an item to follow up on.
Okay, all right, I don't think we have anything held, anything, any old business, any new business, anybody, no, okay, the next work session's August 21st, and I will adjourn this meeting at 7:52, thank you.